We will call our maiden to order at this time. Mr. Williamson, will you give our education force a place?
Father, it is the pleasure to be here again today. You allow us to live, you allow us to enjoy this weather, and we're appreciative for that. And I'm reminded of not only the things that we deal with in this country, but some of the things that we deal with here in Walker County. And sometimes it does appear to be somewhat chaotic, but even amidst the chaos, it seems as though there's always a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. And when we see that light, we know that somewhere there's got to be a little bit of hope. Father, we thank you for that. For each person that is here, we represent the best interest of Walker County Schools, with both the teachers and the students, Father. In order to do that, we need a tremendous amount of wisdom, and we need knowledge, and we need help, and we need strength, Father. Tonight, we ask you for that, for each person that is represented here, and somewhere or another represents Walker County Schools and some classes, Father. We ask that, that you grant us the wisdom that we need to make decisions that are in the best interest of Walker County. And Father, we give you the prayer of all you do, in the name of Jesus, in the name of God. Amen.
We do ask some action items that we need to take care of first. The first one is the creative curriculum for pre-K. It is recommended that the Walker County Board of Education approve purchase of 13 teacher kids and one trainer coordinator kid for the creative curriculum for pre-K. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
And the second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And let me just share real quickly, so we get an allocation from Rockford to Start for pre-K every year, includes salary for teachers, salary for parent pro, as well as supplies. As Rachel was getting to the end of the budget year, her and Debbie sat down and found we had about $100,000 that we were going to have to send back to the state if we didn't spend it quickly. So Debbie immediately said, "The one thing that's on my list is to purchase this curriculum for our teachers." So it was a great way to get into compliance. The other thing we did is we actually shifted Debbie's salary out of the regular budget back into the Rockford to Start budget. You can do up to 6% admin costs. And so it was a great way to do it. I hate putting action items on a call session because we were here to talk about budget, but these are time sensitive, that's why we put them on there. So I wanted to give you a little bit of the background, Rachel, if you weren't feeling anything, I left it out. It was just something we needed to go ahead and get moving on, so we could get it spent this fiscal year.
And Debbie has been asking for curriculum, but she's never had the money to do the curriculum. So we just don't want to send any money back if we can help the pre-K program.
So we just have a motion, and we have a second. All of us in favor? Motion passes. Our second action item, Walker County Career and College Renovation, is recommended that Walker County Board of Education approve the proposal from R.K. Reading Construction, Inc. for the construction of the Walker County Career and College Renovation in the amount of $2,467,431. This project is funded by the Georgia College and Career Academics Project Grant of $3 million for construction and renovations. It is further recommended the Walker County Board of Education enter into a contract with R.K. Reading Construction, Inc. for this project and authorize the board chairperson to execute the contract for and on behalf of the board, with the understanding that the contract documents are correct, have been executed by R.K. Reading Construction, Inc., per specifications. Do we have a motion?
Can we get a little more information on that? Where's the renovation at? What, I mean, this is, and I may be a little late coming in.
No worries, Kevin. So we've had this discussion going on for probably nine or 10 months now. Then all the renovations are in the 500 building, which is the main building right in the center of campus. So we have the launch pad that we took over in 2018. We had a couple of adjacent classes that we've been using and an office space. So we're turning that space and one of the additional rooms, Zach can fill this in, so can quiz, turning that into a mechatronics lab. Downstairs where the cafeteria is currently, we're turning that into a culinary arts lab. That's the two main pieces in this. And then there's an EMT class across the hall from the launch pad. Doesn't need as much work because it was set up pretty close to what we need.
CNA, health care lab already.
Yeah. So that's kind of the process there. We had to go through the properties division with the technical system of Georgia to get a lease on the building. The goal is for us to be able to purchase the building back from GNTC. The reason they won't give it up at this point is because all of their fiber for all of their campuses comes into that building, so that it would create the need for them to do some additional things. The grant is at $3.1 million, so there's a percentage, the .1 part of it can be spent on certain things like branding, marketing, whatever. The $3 million is just for construction, and then Perkins will allow us to purchase equipment for those. And so Justin's been working on the equipment side, Zach and Chris have been working on the renovation side. The reason you're getting this tonight and not Tuesday night is this gives us a week to go ahead and get them mobilized, so that when GNTC classes are finished, and we're finishing up, they can start the renovations and get these over the summer.
How long do we have a lease for that money?
25 years, right now.
So as long as we can put this money in next year, like, we'll willing to?
No, sir, not at all, not at all. And the goal again, and Dr. Poplin, who is the current president, is very willing to do this, it has to go through the properties division to get the, for them to allow us to purchase the building. And that's been the goal all the time, is, because they're not using it at all.
They're using one biology lab. We do have some chair space negotiated in that long-term lease, but they're very accommodating. And as you can imagine, it's, we're going into construction, we're going to displace some people, and if we need to move classrooms to another building for a certain amount of time, they're very willing to do that. They're great partners in that.
And agreement too, Kevin, just to kind of give you the full context. So the mechatronics lab, they will also have access to use that during their, like, their Maymaster, their spring and summer. We're going to give them the opportunity to make money off the lab as well. And so that's another benefit that they're going to gain. Now, same with culinary, if they want to get involved in that.
I'll just add, and Chris may want to chime in on this a little bit, I believe this is still correct on that, with this proposal, there's actually some of the kitchen equipment, is that included, is that correct? So that was kind of an unexpected bonus to come in under the bid, having $3 million from the grant come in under, and it's including some of the culinary equipment, so we're getting to account adding construction costs rather than use another grant later on. So that was pretty exciting to me, honestly.
So what kind of the timetable are we looking at? I know we're obviously, we want to get this approved tonight, but what timetable as far as construction, thoughts on when it would be completed?
So a lot of will determine, be determined when we execute contracts for them, but ideally, we, they're going to be doing a couple other projects at the same time here for us. So it's going to benefit us in a way to have them already some of their stuff on site. And I would like for most of the work, especially the basic work, to be going on during the summer. And then I would say we would end up somewhere mid fall, probably getting it completely wrapped up, because we can't vacate the building completely, so that does make it a little more logistically difficult for us and for them. But we're going to be able to sector off some places and work with college. Stuartfield's been awesome to work with over there and involved in this process. And so I would say definitely by the January, when we open up classes in January, I mean, I can't imagine that we wouldn't have it, I mean, going, I kind of think it's semester, you know, we're getting in December, you know, November even. I kind of feel like it'd be really a tough ask to get in there by the start of the semester, when they start pretty early in August, so that would be pretty tough. But I think getting it all trimmed out and everything in the fall, and having already feel like the end of it, is kind of my idea.
The timeline in the proposal says, just to take what it says, that they're going to focus on mechatronics and EMT first, because those are programs we're trying to start more quickly, and they need less work than the culinary lab. They're a separate side of the building, and in theory, and we all done construction, we always know it costs more and takes longer than any proposal's ever going to say, but in theory it says August for that, but then the culinary lab being later on in the year, and that, you know, we can make adjustments there. But just talking from a programmatic standpoint, with the EMT lab, as Mr. Ray's already mentioned, you don't need much done to that room, but we also got the ambulance donated for that program, and that's actually the lab space. So we can have class if it's not completed in the fall. Also, with regards to mechatronics, we've already got $200,000 of mechatronics lab equipment that's stored away there. And as I mentioned, GNTC's willing to be flexible with us there. So we could start, we have those positions open right now, we're looking and interviewing, so we can start the programs even if they're not completely construction.
Good deal.
And that half a million dollars that's left over, it's going towards equipment, right?
It has to go towards something that is allowable in that grant. I'm sure there's probably a portion of that that can go toward equipment, but the majority of it has to go through fiscal construction.
So Justin Crook is working through some CTA equipment grants, I've been working with at the state level folks as far as getting the, they got approved plans in order and see plans that they can approve that, there's up to $100,000, I think, per program that you comply for equipment. And some of this, that's not going to be enough, but some of it is going to be more than enough to handle a program. So with the appliances, I mean, kitchen, working with kitchen appliances are expensive, so with some of that being designed in the bid, that'll help us out. But it's a really nice situation, I feel like, and it's a win-win for both us and GNTC. And this is exponentially cheaper than having to go, even if you have a land kind of built, I can't even imagine. It's 40,000 square feet, this build, this 20 sacks, so 20,000. It's a really, got good bones, and it's been an interesting project just to work with their folks, with what kind of system they're in place. So, you know, we've got, we've got to be, we'll give and take on both ends, make sure it lines up with what they got in place there. But we're going to be able to do a lot with this grant. I was pleased that it came in at this number. We were a little worried that the Rockford's name, how soon, or how cheap it would come in. But some things like eating their units, rooftop units, kind of perceived along the time, so that could hold us up on some things. But this is for the first step, and then we'll start getting down to the nitty-gritty with the timeline, and probably able to report back to you a more specific timeline per program, and kind of how they want to align this out. But we can't really get there until we get it approved and start negotiating with it. But we're pretty assuming that how this company works, and they've done really good work for us so far, so we had two bids, and they were the cheapest and rated the highest. And Zach Williams, that day, that helped us rate it, which I thought was a neat, capped out addition for somebody with a different perspective than us to see this stuff every day. So he definitely got some education that day, and learned a little bit about what goes on, so that was helpful, and brought a lot of different perspective from his side too. So, yeah, it was, it was really, I'm really pleased that what this came in at, because I was, I was worried that it might not be even in what we had out, you know, from the grant allocated, and then, you know, we have to try to figure out how to, you know, pay for the other part of it, so, yeah, I'm pleased.
With that grant, would security measures be a part of that grant? So I know, you know, with especially what's just happened in Georgia with the, you know, the, what am I trying to say here? Is it Centrix, I think?
So we, we actually already have that.
So that's, I was going to say, with our kids in the building.
Yeah, and that's what GNTC uses, is Centrix.
So they have Centrix this year coming in? Yes. And so now that we're going, I mean, that's part of the reason too, Chickamauga City in our county, and then GNTC, like, for our law enforcement folks, they're not trying to learn much different. So that system's already in that building, so they also have cameras and some different things already in there as well. And then their campus police is actually stationed in that, in the office in that facility too. So, yeah, it made me feel a lot better with our kids coming on there, because we don't want them to learn one set of principles and standards for security in our building, and then have to go there, you know, what do we do here, you know? So it will be a lot, lot more streamlined. That's a good question.
And I just want to offer, I believe most of the rest of the board had the opportunity to come and have a tour. If you ever want to come, just let me know, I'll be happy to show you around, show you what we're planning on doing.
I've been, years, I've been in there years ago, but I'm sure it's changed.
Yes, I have.
A fair amount over the years. Thank you.
Kevin, we need a motion?
Motion.
A second? Any more discussion? All of us in favor? Motion passes. Now it is discussion of FY 2026 budget.
I'll be right here to control the PowerPoint a little bit. I would like to say, well, first of all, I want to say thank you again for allowing us to put those two on there. I think that's going to help us get those moving quicker, and it will slow down the process of getting that, especially the pre-K information. We can have that part of planning, we'll need this training, and then they'll have that for our kids next year, so that's a good thing. And then what I want for tonight, especially for our, you know, I say three new board members, Kevin's been through some budget presentations and things, so he's got a little bit of background. But this is going to be branded to you guys, so I'm really going to, I don't want to bore you guys to death, but I want to, I want to go slowly through the process, not because I need to go slowly for you guys, Travis, I'm just saying. I want y'all to understand that there is a process here in place for a reason. And I want you to kind of see how we walk through this part of it, which will then dovetail into the public hearings that we have to do before you approve a budget, that then dovetails into the potential of mileage hearings when we get to mileage hearings, okay? So they all play together. So in this presentation, you'll think, well, they've done one presentation, and they've presented it multiple times. What we do, it's pieces. The first part is your budget, the second part is for the system and the stakeholders to see it. Then the third part is how does this impact taxes? And so I tried to do it that way, so I want y'all to know we're going to walk through that kind of slowly tonight, just so, and I want you to ask questions, because we're going to throw a lot of things at the wall, and we're going to see what sticks, and you guys are going to kind of help drive what sticks. So I just wanted to, and at any moment, if you have a question, just pop free, let me know what the question is, okay? Rachel's going to be right here behind me, she can answer those questions as well. I always start off with mission and vision, because I want our stakeholders to know, not just our employees, but I also want our stakeholders to know, everything that we do is driven back to what's good for kids, okay? And does it support the mission and vision? If it doesn't, we're not doing it, right? It's got to be connected to the strategic plan, which is automatically connected to the mission and vision. So it's all in alignment, okay? So I always start off with that, because I want folks to know, as we're, as we're talking, Chris and I are talking, any of the departments, every time, the question is always, okay, how does this affect our kids, okay? Now, there's some things that we have to stretch a little bit because it's employee-related, but it's got to circle back to what's happened. So I always start off with that. Gives me a chance to reinforce what our mission and vision is for anybody that's in the meetings. And it's typical, at a budget hearing, we'll have 25 or 30 people between the two meetings. Mileage hearings, depending on what's going on, you can have more, and you guys have sat through some of those meetings as well. I like to point out, where does the revenue come from? Because most people don't realize this. They know property taxes, right? But they also don't realize there's a lot of other things mixed into that that they might not understand and realize. We talk about state funding, so the quality, basic education, the QVE. Then we get capital for grants, which we were talking a little bit about, those Perkins grants, and then of course, equalization. All of that has gotten hit this year differently than it has in years past, and we're going to talk a little bit about that. And then federal funding, so we get a lot of federal funding, Title I, Title II, Title III, IV, IDEA, which is all of your special needs, students with disabilities, then your Perkins. All of those are restricted for very specific purposes. Now, you keep hearing with the new administration in the White House, that they're going to close the DOE, the Federal Department of Education. What you've got to think about is, you've got to think about, and I saw a clip of Ronald Reagan, okay, so that was in the 80s, right? And he said the same thing, he never followed through with it, but his whole point was, there are so many people that work in that building, that we have to take a lot of those funds to pay salaries, and that money never goes to the states, to the local boards, where they need the money, right? Because you're paying salaries for a lot of additional people. So the goal is to decrease the number of people so that the funds increase. So what do they tell us at the end of the year? Expect to get 15% less than you've got this past year. Well, for us, 15% in Title I money is a lot of money, right? So we're hoping that they reduce the number of people, which will increase the amount of funds available, and then that 15% will be back to the normal allocation. But those are where we get our revenue, and that's what we're locked into. The only other revenue sources that we have, Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, is we have the Clearwire data that we own, the bandwidth that we own. We get a monthly amount for a number of years on that. And all that money is non, it's not restricted, but we use that for things for students. We give scholarships out of that, those funds. We pay for a lot of things that are student-directed, okay? It's not a lot of money, but anytime there's money available that doesn't have strings attached, even though it's still part of an audit, we like to make sure people know that. And it's not enough to make a huge impact on a budget, but it is something that people typically don't know about. But I like to make sure everybody knows where the money's coming from. Yes, sir?
This may look a bit wrong, question, but I just want to ask it anyway. Is there, is there a calculated formula for allocation of money to the, that comes to us?
Everything that comes from the state and federal is based on a formula. Yes, sir. And so it's based on the number of kids that are enrolled, and it's, and it's based on how they're served, okay? It's a great question, so I share this, when I started here 13 years ago, we used to have a count in October, a count in December, and a count in March. And they put those in average and together, and then they told you what you were going to get the following year, or what you might lose the following year. So when I started, we were losing over a million dollars a year, every year, going into the next budget. Well, you can't stay in business losing a million dollars a year. So we immediately started looking at, how are we serving kids, okay? So most kids come in with a weighted average for the grade band that they're in, just, there's a number there. But then if they require additional services, that weight gets higher and higher, okay? Now, that's where you start building your dollars, but you've got to be careful, there's a balance there. I'm not going to just throw you into a program so I can move you to a higher weight to get more money. Not going to do that. We're going to talk about the kids, what their needs are, and then we're going to serve them. Here's the, for instance, a student with a very specific disability, we can just say right off, we're going to put them into four segments, we're going to keep them self-contained all day long at the high school, they're never going to go out to a classroom, and I'm going to, I'm going to knock that one out of the park with the funding that's coming from the state. But that kid needs to be out two of those segments in a classroom with age-appropriate peers. Well, that means I'm going to get a lesser funding for him on those two segments. But that's good for that kid, right? So I don't mind losing money there, because I know I'm doing the right thing for that child. That's why we start off with the mission and vision. It's about kids, it's about supporting them. So back to your original question, yes, everything we get is based on a specific allocation. Federal funds, there's a compliance mechanism there too, that says if you spend it differently, you're going to jail. I don't want to go to jail. Love orange, but I don't want to do the orange, right? So you've got to fit the compliance on top of, with the allocation as well. It's a good question. I go into SPOS funds. Lots of people get confused about E-SPOS and our regular budget, okay? Two pots of money. One comes from sales tax, one comes from all that other, property tax, real estate tax, as the law used to be, now it's a specific formula. They get confused, and they say, well, don't go up on your mileage rate, or don't hire more teachers, pay for them out of E-SPOS. Well, you can't mix those two funds. E-SPOS only for buildings, the apartments that are associated with buildings, and we came up with buildings, bonds, books, buses, and bikes. Those are things that you can spend it on, it has to be in the referendum, or you can't spend it at all. But it can't be an offset cost when your general budget can't cover something, and you can move money, you can't do that. So it's very, very specific. A lot of times people come in and they want, they want both or one or the other. That's why I had a little bit of a fear factor, and I know you shared that fear factor, about E-SPOS this last time. People were saying, well, your, your mileage rate's good, you didn't opt out, you ought to be okay with what you're getting locally, so you really don't need that, okay? And so, you know, this project, we've still gotten it because we've got a grant, but if it had come in at $6 million, E-SPOS would have had to pay for that different time. Granted, we would have had to consider a little bit, we were going to pay the FSO fee, but my point being, you can't just take the general fund money and pay for all that, because you've got those things that that stuff is already positioned to pay for. No, you could, and I want you to ask, especially now that I don't have to hit that buzzer and shock you, what now?
You're good right now, this is great. If I start moving forward, closing, Dr. Williamson, you know I'm coming after you, so. I don't, I don't mind telling you that coming from Rockford County, it tells me I'm obviously ignorant of a lot of the issues that take place, but, and this might be one of those ignorant questions, but sometimes I see a sign that says T-SPOS, what's the difference between T-SPOS and E-SPOS?
Transportation, so it's roads, resurfacing, yes, and that's county money, if I get. Keep in mind too, if you remember in House Bill 581, if we decided to opt out, the cities and municipalities weren't going to opt out, because that gives them the option of passing another SPOS that gives them an additional penny. So they weren't going to lose that. We didn't have that option, but we still did the right thing, so. But no, T-SPOS is for transportation, yes. So I go through that, so people will know what that looks like. Then I go into QVE, because I think this is one of the most important pieces. Quality basic education's been in place since 1985, it's never been adjusted. So when you hear your elected officials say, "You fully funded, you guys, again," it's a joke. I mean, it's literally a joke, because they do not fully fund education at all. Do we appreciate what they do to help us? 100%. But you cannot look at that funding formula and say, "It hasn't been adjusted for inflation since 1985 that you're fully funding anything." You're not, okay? And it's hard to say that when you've got billions in the coffers this year too, that's a little bit of a struggle. However, historically, it's supposed to provide 60% of your funding, and local 40%. This past year, we were at 34%.
I think it was about, I think it was higher than that. It's in the PowerPoint way later on.
We'll see that, but the way we're spending our local dollars and our QVE dollars, local's still not at that 40%, not even close.
37%.
So 37. So we're doing a really good job with that. So I kind of point that out to folks, so they'll know, it's not, we're getting more from the state than we are from locals, based on that formula, so. And then I told you that it's based on how we serve kids.
I think it's 31.
31. I thought it was closer to the low end, so. All right, so this is where we kind of start getting into where we're going this year, right? QVE earnings, if you see, the first column is the fiscal year 2025 that we're in, those were the numbers we got in at the midterm. The middle column is what we have gotten so far. It's still tentative, they haven't approved anything yet. The governor just signed the safety bill yesterday, so he started to get his pen ready. So we're going to see whether things start getting approved, so we'll continue to track that. But if you just walk down through there, you can see that we received from the state this past year $73.4 million for enrollment and how we serve kids, okay? This year, the allocation has gone up by $2 million. So you say, okay, how do we get $2 million more in QVE? We had a slight increase in enrollment and the way we're serving kids. That's where that money comes from. That's why I stay on my principles all the time, to know more and more about FTE, learn it backwards and forward, so you know how you're supposed to be scheduling and how you're serving kids. The next one is the local fare five, the local fare share, okay? So every year, they take the equivalent of five mil from our budget, and it goes back to the state to put in a large account, and then it's divvied out by formula for equalization. So the districts, and you back me up on this, I know you will, the districts that their values around in property are lower than the comparison across the state, they get additional money that helps offset and gives, almost like Title I, it levels the playing field for some of our kids, okay? So last year, this turn here, it was at $8.2 million. This year, what we're sending back to the state is the equivalent of $9.5 million. So you can see already, there's a difference of $1.3 million.
And that's based on our tax digest, that local five mil share.
Then you go to equalization. This one's skewed a little bit, in our opinion, because we were predicting last year that our equalization was going to be somewhere around $9.1, $9.2 million. It came in at 12.8. Remember what the governor did last year? He got criticized because the coffers were so full, that he made a one-time donation to equalization, and we picked up an additional $3 million last year.
That increased to $266 million in FY '25 statewide, so that's why we didn't lose money. And that, that equalization is based on what we do with the tax meal rate. So that's why, and it's like two years behind. So this year, I kept telling the board last year that we would lose probably about $1 million, So this year, I kept telling the board last year that we would lose probably about a million dollars. That's just an estimate because we went from 17.404 mils to 16.404 mils two years ago.
And that's the effective rate, not necessarily the rate we set.
Right.
It, it's.
But it impacts equalization both either way, but you're right.
It does, it does, you're right. The effective rate is based on how much tax money we, revenue we actually receive and they calculate. But the tax mil rate is what you set to, to do the taxes, but then there's an amount you actually receive. And sometimes you receive, sometimes we have people paying delinquent taxes and it's kind of, they might go back and pay step pay over the year before and you don't know when they're going to pay it, so.
So you can see the equalization went down this year. The estimate right now is $9 million. So based on the inflated number last year and the number that we actually thought it was going to be at, we're losing $3.8 million right off the bat in equalization. That, that's a huge hit. Yes, sir.
So, so what's, what's the prediction, I just don't, I mean, when you're talking, you, you tell you not, you said that, that what you had predicted here, what's the prediction?
So the FY26, the middle column, we get an allotment sheet, but it's a tenistic sheet from the state.
Okay.
They send us all those numbers. Yes, sir. And that, that equalization is based on your, your two years ago digest. So that, that's the number that they send to us.
And this is usually pretty, it's usually pretty solid when they send it. At this point, it's not even on the allotment sheet, it's on a spreadsheet that they sent where the state has actually calculated our QBE formula. But they're still, before they put it on the allotment sheet, they're waiting for the governor to sign the budget and approve it and make sure that these are the, the correct numbers. That something's not going to change or he's not going to veto something in the budget, so.
And this three million deduction, actually three, that three million is the three million that the governor put in last year.
It is, that's exactly right. So we had predicted last year that it was going to be about the same, but he added the money to it. So you're exactly right.
And this one actually should be calculating two years ago when we went from 16.404 to 14.982 in the mil rate. Um, that, that's what they should be using to calculate this year, the equalization for next year because it's always two years behind when that, what it, when they calculate it. Which they won't share that spreadsheet right now either. I can usually get it from them, but, and not till the governor signs.
Okay, this, this may be simplistic because I'm a simple minded person. But are all these calculations based on overall enrollment in Walker County?
The FTE, the QBE earnings, yes. And the equalization has some play with that as well and how they're served. Yeah, you're right. So you can see nursing went up a little bit. I don't understand that unless that was something the governor chose to do because the nursing dollars come from the Philip Morris lawsuit years ago and that money has been decreasing exponentially every year. So $196,000 for nurses is just a drop in the bucket and it's hard to get, you know, true health professionals. But anyway, we're appreciative of the 3,400 additional. Transportation went up again, you can see that by $536,000, so we're appreciative of that as well. But when you run those numbers, you can see as we started budget building, we're already in a $2.5 million deficit. Okay, not deficit, but we're facing a reduction in, in revenue from the state at $2.5 million going into the budget. This is just a chart showing revenue changes over the years and then I think a local five mil share. And so you can see as revenue has gone up, as, as the assessed value of property has gone up, then we've seen the local five mil share that we send back to the, to the, to the government for that equalization. And it used to be that, you know, we sent back a number, eight plus million. We were getting nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 million dollars back. So there was a three, four million dollar difference for us on the plus side, which is great, right? And if you'd have gotten the same equalization this year, think about that, we wouldn't be starting off in a deficit this year. It would be more of a positive, but.
This is the first time when they, the local five mil share has been, what we're giving up is more than what we're getting back. And that's on the next, on the next slide too, so.
So you can see from FY22 all the way up to current numbers, uh, what the local five mil share was. So in 22, you can see it was 7.2 million dollars to the projection for 26 is at 9.5. So it's definitely increased, you know, substantially. And then you see on the other side, if you'll compare FY22, you lost 7.2, but you picked up 8.7. So you had a, a difference of a million five on the plus side. Seven million, 8.4, you had a million four. So it was, it was running pretty comparably between what you were giving up to the state for equalization, but what you were gaining in the equalization. So we were still the beneficiary of decent money. Last year was an anomaly. We gave up 8.2, but we picked up 12.8, right? This year, we're getting back to normal. Unless, now again, the governor hasn't signed anything yet, so he may put some money back in there again to equalization to offset some of these costs. We're just having to give you what we have right tonight so that you'll know as we're going into the rest of this discussion where we're starting. And so you can see we're giving up 9.5, we're only getting back nine. So we're losing a half a million dollars right off the bat in equalization and that's, that's going to be difficult for us. And you guys know, the only place to make that up for us is only two choices. It's either in people or it's in property tax. That's the only two options you have. So you either start cutting your people and your programs or you start considering what the millage rate looks like. And you're, you know, we're sitting in a really good place right now, 14.982. It's the lowest in the history of Walker County. True. So we're in a great place, but there may be, you, you may end up having to consider looking at that as you go forward. Does that, does that make any sense?
And there's a state law, basically, that equalization money that we received 12.8 million this year. Um, there's a state law that was passed the year I started here, I think, that if you drop your millage rate or your effective millage rate below 14, you're no longer eligible for equalization funding. So when they calculate equalization, as you, each time you lower the millage rate, you actually lose equalization funding. But if you go, in the past, it's been if you go below 14 mils, then you lose equalization two years from that. The last two years, our rollback rate for the millage was below 14. It was 13 something each time they calculated it. And we didn't want to lose that equalization because we would still have to give up the local five mil share. Now, they have passed a law this, just this year, I think, changing that, dropping it to 10. But every time we lower the millage, not only are you losing property taxes, but you are also, you know, losing, shaving off a million or more of equalization.
And not to throw our neighbors under the bus because I don't like that stuff, you know, I don't like to play like that. It's just, it's an example and it's a factual example, it's all I'm giving you. So they chose five years in a row to roll back. They lost seven and a half million dollars in equalization and now they're having to borrow money to make payroll. That's a scary place to be. They have less than a million dollars in the bank right now. That you can't operate a, a, a budget of a hundred plus million dollars with a million dollars in the bank. It just doesn't work. I mean, and so then you're having to have a tax anticipation notice and you're borrowing money based on collections coming in and you're living month to month off borrowed money. And, you know, I, I've done that before as a, a, a person working in a homeowner. I know how that feels, there's a lot of pressure there, but you can't run a business like that. You, you just can't. So that's why there's such a balance. And you guys know, I'm never going to tell you what to vote on. I'm going to give you numbers and options, I'm going to give you the backup for it, then I'm going to ask you to make a decision. But I'm always going to present it to you with some level of balance that says if we do this, then here's what offsets the balance and that's what we're trying to do. I just needed you to know that we're already, before we've even started talking about dollar raise, step increases, all of that, you're losing 2.5 million dollars right off the bat. Okay, now, everything that we do is based on projections, like our budget this year. We projected a number last year. We're already seeing that we're going to be under that budget. Part of that's because we had a number of positions that we couldn't fill all year long. And so you budgeted for those positions and their benefits, but you never hired them. So the money's still sitting there, okay? That puts you in a better shape with your financial reserve. But when you know you're losing two and a half million right off, all that you just saved, it's, it's going away.
And in the last few years, we have also, including this whole year, we've used ESER funds to, a lot of times for continuity of services, which helped build fund balance. We used two and a half million at the beginning of this year for some, you know, that's helping this year's budget come under what we projected.
So let me ask this, uh, the 2.5 million we will be starting in the hole, so to speak. We had the anomaly, the governor gave more last year for that. That money, where is it in reserve now? Was it spent already? Where is that, that three million plus that the governor had put in extra equalization?
So I don't know if we could, I don't know if you could track back Kevin, that exact amount of mon, I mean, that exact money, that equalization money because it goes into your general fund?
It's either been spent or it's winding up the same balance.
Right, so it's, yes, that's exactly right. And then on top of that is the, the remaining ESER funds that we were able to move back and forth. We were able to pay for some things that would have been coming out of the regular budget that didn't. And so that's why that fund balance continued to build through the course of this year. Yes, we knew this was coming, that's why I kept pushing. Whatever we can do with ESER funds to get our fund balance built up, because when COVID money's gone, we're back to normal, we're going to be in a world of hurt if we don't have a good fund balance. And so that's, that's kind of why we've landed where we have. There's been a strategic plan to get to this point so that I wasn't standing here tonight going, we got a $2.5 million cut coming and we got a million dollars in the bank. I mean, that would have been, you know, I would have probably just packed up. I'd have left my laptop because it doesn't want to even left. I mean, because that, that's just not good planning. Now, I think we've done a really good job of getting to this point. I just need to tell you the worst of the worst as we're about to throw out some other things too. It's a good question, though. These things I like to point out for folks that are, especially in the audience during a budget hearing, we get no funding for any of those positions. People think, oh, you get all this for this, this, this. No, 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 we don't. We get limited funding for ex, not extra positions because a custodian, a school bookkeeper, payroll accountant, all of those, those aren't extra people. Those are people that you have to have to make this business work, okay? But you get no funding from that. And then state funds lessen 20% of transportation costs. Even though they gave us 500,000 more this year, it's still probably going to be 23, 24% max. So when they say fully funding, they're missing that mark by a, a mile. Don't mean to use a transportation term there. And then everything keeps rising. And just like we were talking about earlier, Travis mentioned his company buying net and the, the, the margin, the price hasn't gone up at all with tariffs. And he said, well, it's because they were gouging this with the price, oh, the price didn't anyway. When the tariffs do come and the prices go up, this affects us just like it does any other business. We're in that same boat, just like Mr. Wallace says, HAC unit. Back, backlog on those, it might be two years before you're getting something because it's coming overseas and the price is going up exponentially. All right, so now let's get into the weeds a little more. All right, you ready? Is everybody okay where we are right now? I don't want to go too fast, I want to make sure you're getting the questions and keep interrupting and asking. So, wait.
Go back one.
Go back one.
So transportation in this budget, if you build in this like buses and stuff built in, are you going to go through that in this slide?
We, we don't, but what, in that budget that we get from them, they also build in an amount where we qualify for bonds, okay, to purchase buses. We typically, Chris, we qualify for one, one year, we qualify for many.
For the last two, one, two total for the last two years.
For the last two years.
Rachel?
Yeah, yes.
Have we bought that? So we're buying two buses every two, every year or?
We're buying more than that.
Okay.
And, and I think three years ago.
Never mind that.
Yeah.
Now, keep in mind, the bond amount is.
Eighty-eight thousand.
Eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars.
And the budget's 200 and, okay.
Two or three or something like that.
For a grand to 86, yeah.
Yeah.
So we usually split it, the 88, 110 in general fund, whereas the, where the state funding picks it up and then the rest.
We're making, we're just not making.
We did have eight from the state though, about three years ago.
And you try not to buy too many at one time because you have to replace the same amount. And so you kind of even it out over the course of the years. And we kind of also have, uh, E-SPOS filling the gaps with buses because it's an outlay expenditure. And it's easy to get, get on a, a system so that you're replacing enough to keep your fleet. You don't want to have the best fleet in the world, but you want to have a pretty good fleet since we're traveling a million, six, hundred, a million, 600,000 miles a year. You're putting a lot of wear and tear on buses and so you've got to keep replacing them.
I was just curious when they, when they went through.
Yes, sir.
So what you were saying about you don't want the fleet to get too new, um, they don't give you, you don't qualify for bonding if you're too new. And we ran into that where I came from. They don't have a bus on the road, uh, uh, over 10 years old, which sounds great and it is, that is good. Um, but there's a cost to that too. And then you can work yourself too new to get out of even qualifying for those, those bonding. So, so it's a game. I mean, it, it really is. You got to, you got to make sure you maximize how well you can give funding. So there's more of a strategy.
So this slide starts a little bit of, of a question that Rachel and I asked you guys a month or so ago about some direction forward. Uh, there were a couple of things that came up. One was the consideration of a dollar an hour and a step increase for our non-certificated employees. And then the, the thought of adding experience levels after, it's actually after year 21. 21 and 22 is when they stop getting experience. So 23 through whatever they work, 30, there's no additional bump for experience, right? So we started doing some checking, but I want to, I want to go to the last bullet there. Cert, certificating experience. Under the current scale, if you're eligible for an increase this year for experience, you get that. It's every two years is when you get it. But we'll have, just for numbers sake, half of our teachers will get a bump, half of them won't this year because where they fall, right? That always costs us about a million every year. I mean, we, that's something we budget in every year, we tell you guys that every year. It's always going to cost us about that amount of money every year for that experience increase, okay? That's just up through that 21, 22, that's when it stops. And that's on a state scale, all right? What we did, we'll explain the two above that. We started looking at systems around us that go all the way to 30, okay? The only two we found so far are Calhoun City and Gordon County. Calhoun City did it, Gordon County was losing teachers, so what did they do? Because they're in the same neighborhood. They had to do the same thing. That's, that's the only two we found so far. Now, that doesn't mean there's not others. That just means in our region, those are the only two we found so far. So what they do is they go 23, 24. So that means when you hit year 23, you get the bump, but then you don't get it at 24 because they're together. 25, 26, you get one more bump. And then they do 27 plus. So all the way to whenever you stop, you hit 27, you get your bump, that's your last bump. So you, you, you're going to get three more experience bumps by doing it that way, okay? When we looked at that, that's a substantial increase for folks, okay? So we, we, I say we, I've got a mouse in my pocket. I went to Rachel and said, let's think about this. What if we took the local teacher supplement? If you remember, for those of you that were on the board in 23, we brought a proposal to the board that said, let's move up, and I think I've got that here.
Is this the proposal?
Yes. Okay, so what you're looking at there is our scale currently has two columns. Less than 15 years experience, 15 to 22 years experience. And that's where it stops right now, okay?
Well, it actually is just at 15 and over gets this column.
Well, it stops at 21, but we, we, we look into 21 and 22 because you don't get a, you don't get a bump at year one and then year two and then year three. You get one, two, you get one bump. Three, four, you get one bump. Five, six, you get one bump. So it's not every year that you get this. So 21, 22 sit together, it's one bump, okay? So that shows you the potential of introducing and getting approval from the board on a third tier. And that's the tier 23 plus. What that means is, let's just take a T4, okay? Currently at a T4, and it says on there.
It's a bachelor's degree.
It's a bachelor's degree, it's $2,000. That's what a T4 stands for. It's a teacher with a four-year degree, bachelor's degree. They're getting, on this scale, we're, we're showing this is a proposed scale. So last year, it would have been how much?
1,500.
$1,500. So we propose moving everything on tier one, $500 more than it is right now, okay? Everything on tier two, $500 more than it was right now, okay? So a T4 is going from this year, if I'm less than 15 years, I've got a four-year degree. My local supplement is $1,500. Next year, based on this proposal and your approval, that T4 teacher is going to get an additional $500 for $2,000 for their local supplement. So they get a state salary scheduled based on the number of years they've worked and their certification level. And then we add a local supplement of the proposal would be $2,000.
And since, since FY 2020, the state has bumped the teacher scale. Um, in 2020, they had bumped to $3,000. Um, in 2020, they had bumped to $3,000, they bumped to $2,000, they bumped to $2,000, they bumped to $2,500 this year, so a total of $9,500 on the teacher scale, on the state portion. And in FY 23, the last time we looked at the local salary scale, um, the state had not given an increase to teachers in FY 23. So we actually, we proposed to the board bumping it $1,000 or $500, and we bumped it $500 on the late, the local portion. So basically, basically this scale that you're looking at, our local salary supplement, gets added to the state scale and that's what's on our teacher pay scale.
Got a question, go ahead.
Just for clarity, um, so if it's less than fifteen years, does the scale is what right now currently is?
For a T-four?
Um, it might be.
So right now, everything on there is a proposal. They would all be, they would all be $500 more.
Currently fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm taking $500.
Right, yes. And then the third scale, the twenty-three plus, we don't even have that currently. That's a proposed scale. That would be in lieu of doing the experience. That's the only reason I threw that out there is because the experience, if you look at the number of teachers that we have currently that fall into twenty-three or higher, it's 270 teachers, okay? They all fall in different places. There's some of them that are twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty- They're also at different certification levels. So as we look at this, Rachel, you help me with the numbers, right? At the low end, to get everybody from where they currently are right now, twenty-one, twenty-two, I'll, I'll, I'll wait, just a second, I'm gonna wait, no. So this year Kevin's a twenty-one, twenty-two, he's a twenty-two-year teacher, he gets no more experience bumps. He's a T-four. Next year he would be at twenty-three years. If we did a twenty-three, twenty-four, it's gonna cost him by formula, it's gonna cost the teacher, he's gonna get a raise of about $1,400, is what it's gonna end up being, okay? But Kevin, all of them aren't gonna land at twenty-three, they're all over the years and they're all over the certifications. We projected that this would cost us at a minimum of about $650,000 to get everybody on this new scale, on these new experience levels, okay? To a high of almost $2 million, because we've gotta figure out where they all fall.
That was if we added-
If we added the experience levels, three bumps, okay? So you're, if it's, if it's $1,500 a year, each experience bump, right? Let's just say for, for, whatever. That's $4,500 if I'm on the end of the scale right now. If I'm a twenty-nine-year teacher with a T-seven, I, we're adding a lot of money to that person to get them to that point. That's why I backed up and said, wow, if we're gonna be in the whole 2.5 starting off and we, we're potentially gonna have to add a million nine just to get everybody on an experience level, why don't we back up and look at this from a local supplement? Because right now, if I'm at twenty-three years, my local supplement, if we're a T-four, it stays at, well, it would have been less than 500, so $2,700. That's all I'm getting every year is that local supplement. This would create a new scale for them, it would increase them a little bit more, and it would give them something that could be added to TRS as they get every year. They get that local supplement every year, not just those three bumps. It ends up being quite a bit less in overall pay for them. I think it's about $4,000 less on the tail end, but it's still something to consider. You got a question?
Does this include, let's say we bring back teachers after retirement, we bring them back part-time, does this include them too, are they in this scale?
The local supplement, they are, but they don't take benefits because their benefits come out of TRS. Um, so it saves us $22,000 right off the bat because we're not-
And we don't have to pay any on their TRS, right?
We still-
Because I know that's what, right, we still do?
We, we still don't pay into their TRS, but we still pay their six percent. We pay our percent and we pay their six percent. But what we do is we negotiate that out of their salary.
And it depends on what part-time, I mean, if they come back, but it's 0.435. 0.435 is the magic number that I use for anybody coming back part-time. We negotiate with those that, uh, came under that house bill, under the, um, the high need areas that actually took a year off, uh, and then came back and worked full-time. And that's a different category. And what we did is, we did have to pay the TRS, but we negotiated with them and actually backed it out of their salary.
So you were making X when you left us, we brought you back at that, but we took out the six percent that was going back to TRS, so we don't pay them.
It was coming out of their checks previously for TRS. For years, so their teacher supplement had already dwindled down, but now when they come back, they would get this new teacher supplement, correct, of over twenty-three years. They're right, I'm thinking they would-
They would get 0.4355 of it, not all of it, but yes, you're right, they would get the new higher rate, they would. The only argument there I would have is, all of that knowledge base is going out the door and we're not replacing it with anybody coming in. So in order to save that knowledge base and keep that experience there, it, it would be worth it because you're automatically saving $22,000 plus six percent on every teacher that you bring back because you're not paying the benefits and you're negotiating out of their TRS. So it's, it's, it's a, I mean, it's a good deal. We get the experience, we get the, the knowledge base, we get all the training for a lot less of the cost.
So ba- basically, anything that we do beyond this, I've got the, our scale for this year on top, and then the next thing, the next page is the state scale, and then the next page is what our, what that local supplement currently looks like. So if you were, were to take our local supplement and the state pay and add the two together, that's what's on our pay scale on the front. So for ea- anything that we add, like a sweeper to add, like those, like he was talking about Gordon County and Calhoun City, they have added to their pay scale, but they went to twenty-one years and twenty-two, then they added a, a layer for twenty-three to twenty-four years, then they added another layer for twenty-four to twenty-five, and then they added a twenty-seven plus. So they added three rows on the bottom of theirs. But everything that you add above or below what the state is giving us, anything that you're adding is local.
And so is the teacher supplement.
And so is the teacher supplement.
It's the same thing. So what you're looking at is, the, the whole goal of considering this was retention and attracting quality teachers. That was the whole goal. Well, one of them's gonna cost you the first year to get everybody where they're supposed to be. It's gonna either cost you 685 or 1.9. We don't know that yet, that's why I'm giving you the information. This is not gonna cost you that much money. It's gonna give them something for every year, it's more than they're making now because think about it, you're twenty-three-year and plus, they don't get a higher local supplement after they reach twenty-three years, that, it stays the same.
So on this, on this pay scale, I'm a prospective teacher, I'm, I'm coming from somewhere else. I moved into the area and I'm, I'm weighing the differences between Walker, Caduceo, Whitfield. And I look at that pay scale, I'm gonna see twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three plus. It's, there's no distinction in here between local supplement or just-
That they can go pull that state scale and kinda see that.
And compare how much we're adding to it.
But what this local supplement on the screen would do is it would take this pay scale and add $500 all over it.
Right.
And then if we decided to go with the twenty-three-year bump in the local supplement again, we would change this twenty-one and over to twenty-one and twenty-two, and then we would go twenty-three and over and add another level here with that local, so, I mean, with that difference.
Just throwing something else out, and I, I don't know where this went in legislation, but I know there was talk of the twenty-five-year-plus retirement at one point. I don't know if that's fit or not.
It's, it was approved to go into an actuary study for a year.
Okay. So it, it almost would seem to fit, if we were gonna do this, to go up to twenty, had twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and then twenty-five plus at that point. To, if that, if that's gonna come about, to have an additional step in there with this, it almost makes sense in that, you know, pretty seamless. And if we did have folks that retired that wanted, you know, that we could get their knowledge back, you know? Plus, I think the more we could, the more opportunity we'd have with that experience, add that extra layer in there, I think you have a better chance of retaining folks, especially as they're getting close to that retirement age. If they can get that little extra bump, they're willing to hang on here compared to going somewhere else and chasing money to get those highest two to eight years in, toward their retirement. I don't know if that makes sense.
It does, it does, Kevin, and that, that's the whole thing, is we started doing the comparison. In the local supplement going up $1,000, that T-four, if they stay in there till thirty years versus the experience bumps, it's about a $4,000 difference on final year pay to highest year. About $4,000 for that, for that teacher, okay? Then what you gotta do is you gotta look at it and go, okay, if I worked thirty years, what was $4,000 gonna get me in retirement? When you start looking at it from that perspective, it becomes negligible. However, they don't see it like that. They just see $4,000 versus $1,000. So I was just trying to make sure that what I brought to you was, is there something we can do this year and then continue that study going into next year with that actuary study coming out where they say, yeah, it's twenty-five, because then you're saying twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five plus, that's your idea, not mine, it makes sense, but the timeline would work better for us. Then you've got a better idea of what your budget looks like next year.
And what house bill?
Well, if I land one and all the, all the exemptions, but do they approve this at twenty-five? Because I think that twenty-five and sixty days off, not a year off, you're gonna have more people come back for that, so.
And to throw one other thing at you that is just great for the state of Georgia, back in, oh gosh, it would have been in the early nineties, they gave teachers away to get themselves off of that lowest scale of the beginning teacher, and there were components that they had to do to get themselves salary bumps or experience steps. And that happened, and then actually the state of Georgia did away with that requirement and they said, no, if you are a fully certified teacher and you start out in Georgia, you're gonna start out with zero years of experience, but if you have all of your certification and you complete your first year teaching in Georgia, then we're gonna start bumping you up. So on some of our people, this is really, where it gets really interesting on contracts. If you look at me, and I've been here my entire career in Georgia, I was fully certified when I started, I have twenty-eight years of experience. That's what it shows in our program, twenty-eight years of experience. That's what TRS has been at, twenty-eight years of experience. But if you look at pay, I'm actually paid for two additional years. Some are paid for one additional year, depending on if they came from Tennessee and came here. So we have that, you have that differential sometimes of from zero to two years. You don't really need, I can give you all these different scenarios, but that's something else, Kevin, that when you're talking about people moving up, I've had to tell people, well, I'm being paid on thirty years, that means I can retire. Well, no, that's something the state of Georgia did a long time ago to help teachers, but for TRS, how long have you been paying into TRS? Does that make sense, what I've just said there? So sometimes you see some people say, I actually get paid for more experience than I have. They do, some, based on their credentials and so forth, and how they started and where they started and if they were certified. Sorry about that, Mr. Ryan.
Am I correct, I was gonna say with that, bring me if I'm wrong, but that was done pretty much to reward folks for staying.
Right.
It was, it was, most definitely, and to be fully certified. That's another reason, when you have people that come to us that are doing an alternative program, it's very advantageous for them to get that program completed because if they take two years to do it, they're not eligible for that bump. But if they can come in, do what they need to do, get their certification, fully certified after their bachelor's and do the, um, Georgia path program, they're eligible for a one-year bump. So, uh, again, um, there used to be things that you had to do, courses you had to take, but Georgia did away with that. And this is something Georgia does, this is something HR departments have to report. I have to report when somebody leaves us, they ask us, were they advanced on the salary scale? If so, how much?
So with, with this, again, you said somewhere from 650 to 1.9, that's if we're paying the experience part of it, with supplement, you said it would be less, correct?
So, so it is.
So what is our number for the twenty-three plus?
So that's the one that's in front of you now. It's certificated, if, if you increase it by $500, you create that scale. I mean, the, the, for everyone, that's about $700,000. That, that bumps $500 on less than fifteen, more than fifteen. If you add the twenty-three plus local supplement scale, it adds an additional $300,000. It's at the $1 million. So you're looking at a million if you up the teacher supplement already, that's why, because you're adding a tier.
Plus the certificated experience.
Right, that's already in there, I mean, that's, that's gonna be, you, you have to, you have a choice, yeah. But if you look at, and I'm just, the low end was $646,660. That's if everybody is right now at twenty-one, twenty-two, and that's not the case, so they're 270. The middle would be 1.3 and the high is 1.9. So I would safely say we're probably somewhere between the 646 and the 1.3 to, to get everybody where they need to be on the experience scale where you're at a million with just adding.
So if you put, if you put a second step to the twenty-five plus, and I know it's not an exact correlation, it might be exactly double, but you're, you're probably, you know, another, you know, double that or 2.1 or something like that with the extra additional.
And, and basically what, what I did is I took, I took the difference between the nineteen and, the nineteen to twenty and the twenty-one and over and just kind of, okay, we would increase them this if they're on this. And we, basically we have, in this year's stuff, we have like, I think thirty percent of our teachers are at the twenty-one plus, but I don't know exactly, all of our recording pretty much stops at twenty-one plus.
That's the 276 that I-
Yeah, there's 276 teachers right now, and that can change, of course, next year.
Let me give you maybe a, a better example. So Kevin, you're a T-four. So at, at thirty years, on the scale right now, with the current, uh, local supplement, you're gonna, you're gonna retire, your highest two years are gonna be $63,587. You're gonna get 60% of that for the rest of your life. If we do the supplement increase and add the twenty-three, it's gonna be $64,587. Because you're gonna get $1,000 more on your supplement, but you don't, I mean, you get that same thing for the remainder of the years that you're under contract, right? So that's your highest two years. If you do the experience for that same teacher, it's gonna go to 68,175. So you can see there's about a little less than $4,000, $3,000 plus. And then you've gotta take that and go, okay, what's 60% of that? And is it worth the board adding that? It's worth it to the employee, don't get me wrong, but can you sustain that into the future? And that's the biggest issue right now is just sustaining it. Then when you get to the T-seven, highest person on the scale, they've got their doctor, right? And they're twenty-seven, or they're, they go thirty years. They're $93,207 is what they're gonna get 60% of, that's, that's what the scale saves. We would take them to $88,080. So you can see there's about a $5,000 difference for that, higher education attainment, you know, same number of years. So all I'm trying to give you is things to think about. The experience for the first year to get everybody where they are, it's gonna be an exponential cost to you, somewhere between 700 and a million three. This one is going to be a million dollars, if we can calculate that one. And what that does is it adds a scale for twenty-three up that we've never had before. They've never, they get the same supplement, when they tap out, they get that same supplement for the rest of the time. So that, that was the, the first thought, and I know that's a lot to digest, I, I understand that. I just felt like we needed to talk through that as we started off, where we started off, so that everybody was done. Because there's, there's a big difference in the experience to start with and not the teacher supplement, if that makes any sense. And when we did this in ninety-three, we got very competitive with those around us, except for Whitfield, except for Dalton City, except for Gordon and Calhoun City. We're just not gonna compete. But when you go to Whitfield and you go to, to Dalton, you're going into a school that's probably seventy-five, at least seventy-five percent ESOL population. So there's a different dynamic that you're gonna have to deal with than you're, you're maybe not dealing with here in Walker County. That's not good, that ain't a difference, it's just- That's not good, bad, or the difference, it's just, it's a fact, right? So we did the five hundred, you guys gave us graciously, said five hundred. We asked for a thousand, we did five hundred because we weren't sure where we were going to be with the budget. That made us a little more competitive. So right now, when you look at like districts around us, at different areas of the scale, we're really competitive. So you're, back to your question about the starting salary, they're beginning to look at that and go, Kevin, the state says this, everybody does that. What's the local supplement? If it's attractive enough and the climate we have in Walker County, we have more teachers coming for that than they do for the money sometimes, especially your young folks. Does that all make sense? I know that was a lot to digest and, but I mean, I just want you to begin thinking too because the goal here is for, for new folks, the goal would be Tuesday night, based on your instructions tonight, we'll have something else for you to begin to react to. Because what happens is when you go to the June board meeting, planning session, we have to have a pre-meeting open to the public to go over the full budget, tentative budget. So you have to be in the next month, you have to be close enough to say, yeah, we're good with this right here, these are the things we're ready to move forward with so we can present that to the public. Then we come down here to the board meeting and we have one of those budget meetings again at six o'clock. And then at six thirty, you vote on the tentative budget. Then you have July off, not off, but we wouldn't be talking about, because you're waiting on the tax digest, the military rate, and then we go into August and you're starting to talk about the potential of having military. So that's kind of why we wanted to walk through all of this. So let me move on to a couple of other slides. This is the non-certifications that you guys mentioned, the one dollar an hour plus a step available. So if you go up on the scale a dollar an hour for all of our certification codes, and what that does is we did that a couple of years ago because our starting pay was lower than, you know, Wendy's, Chick-fil-A, places like that. And so we had people jump the chip and go make fifteen dollars an hour. What they didn't realize is they were going in fifteen dollars an hour, but they weren't only getting part-time, they were getting no benefits, they were working weekends and nights and they hated it, so they came back. So we decided, let's adjust our scale. So if you add a dollar, it adjusts every scale across, every amount across the scale. The step increases based on their experience level. And so some people are out of steps. They've crossed the line of all the available steps. We don't want to keep adding steps to the pay scale. So it's easier to add the dollar amount and it affects all the scales. So if you're topped out of the scale, you still get a dollar extra on your pay, if that makes sense, okay? You can see a dollar an hour is going to cost us about one point two one million dollars to add that to every high scale across the certificated. And then if you did, if you did it, I'm non-certificated, and then if you do a step with that, that's another four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So you can see what you're looking at if you do that for your non-certification codes. The other thing that we've talked about is the potential of looking at our bus drivers. And so I had Rachel go through and give me, and this is just on drivers, and the only reason I parked on drivers, again, another pun that's right in there in the transportation line, right? We're having a hard time finding drivers, right? Okay, so a lot of districts around us are, their starting pay's twenty dollars an hour to drive, okay? We're, we're at sixteen ninety-seven, that's our starting pay, okay? So if we went to twenty dollars an hour on the low end, that's three dollars and three cents increase. You'd have to increase that on all your steps across the board, okay? If we did that, right now we have sixty-seven drivers, that would be about three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for us to increase the drivers to the low end twenty dollars up to a high end of twenty-five thirty-seven. We feel like that that would start attracting some more folks. Kevin, you were in that business before, you know how that is. We're just not attracting drivers at this point because it's a difficult job. But that's three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars just with that group.
Is that, does that include the attendance on the special?
That does not, that's just drivers. The tenants would be included in the dollar an hour, but they wouldn't be included in this. And the only reason we say that, Kevin, is you know what that looks like for a driver. It's CDL training, it's on the road, they're the ones behind the wheel. I mean, there's a lot more at stake than the person sitting in the bus behind them. So that's kind of where we are with that. The dollar an hour for that group is a hundred and four thousand. It's in that one point two one that we had already in there. The three thirteenths and the additional two eleven would be, you know.
And the additional funding from the state for transportation was right at five hundred dollars?
Five hundred thousand, yes, sir. That's exactly right. So I mean, that's, that's, that's kind of where that whole thought process came from when we saw that five hundred thousand. So.
So do you think that at twenty dollars an hour, we would, I mean, what's the realistic expectation of, of, I mean, more drivers you think that would bring in?
Travis, I would safely say that right now, Chris, you, you correct me if I'm.
Just a shot in the dark.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong. Is Chris over there?
No, you're.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I couldn't see. I would say forty to forty-five percent of my drivers currently are seventy and over. So at any time.
Sure.
I can leave forty, any time, shoulders, knees, backs, caring for someone else, heart attack, stroke, I mean.
What you said in the number one?
At least forty percent over seventy, yeah.
How many, sixty drivers?
Sixty-seven.
Yeah, but you used to have, what, ninety or something?
We had ninety-two routes before.
And coming out of COVID, it dropped to about thirty.
So we'll say community stops are a jewel. They work wonderfully and that helps when you've got lesser staff. But it also decreases the level of service you can provide to your, to your clients, right? I'm okay with a balance there, but also know that the driver that's the, that age that shows up every day whether they're sick or not, we're losing those folks and to replace them, you've got to offer them something that they won't drive. So that's kind of where we are, that sixty percent. So if that forty percent leaves, we're in a world of hurt, world of hurt. So it was just a way to try to find something that attracts more.
Hoping it works.
Hoping it works, that's exactly right.
I think it's a great idea and I know in the factory life, we start out at twenty and we still can't find anybody and we're not driving kids around.
Right, and I agree with you, so. And I'll be honest with you, and these are the things you've got to think about, that's why you, you guys are retired, is it, is it split the difference, is it buck and a half this year with the intent to look at something next year? I don't know.
Or ten dollars.
That's right, so you say, okay, we're going to do this just for drivers to try to attract more. And then if we have the ability to do that and get it to three oh three next year or get it to three dollars next year, we're going to, we're going to move forward. It's kind of like the supplement, ninety-three you did fifty-five hundred with the thought you would do five hundred more, here we are asking for that again, so. So that, again, I'm just throwing out a lot of stuff to see what sticks on the wall and you guys say, hey, I like that, I don't like that, we need to really reconsider.
Or proceed in budget for Rachel.
Yeah, so.
I think this, I mean, thinking logically, this is probably the biggest need bus drivers, I mean, it's probably yes or no today, obviously, but that's a major component, right? People who work against the school and I just don't think sixteen eighty-seven, sixteen whatever, I don't know what it is, it's a liberal wage, twenty's not even a liberal wage, but it works.
And Travis, to think about this, it used to be that our drivers were self-employed, had their own business and they needed benefits. That's the only reason they drove. So they didn't care what they made, they got CDL out of it, they were able to work their business in between and they got benefits. That, those days are gone. We just don't have those folks any longer, yeah. So the next one is, is just huge. You guys know this, it has been going up seven percent for certificate, this is for certificating. Anybody that's a certificated employee, we have to offer them insurance. Whether they take it or not, it's a different story. But if they do, it costs us now from twenty-one one twenty to twenty-two six twenty a year. That's paid on every employee to offer them insurance. So you can see, that's an estimate of one point five million dollars to this year's budget just for health insurance for your certificated folks, which is nine hundred plus certificated employees. And you can see, since two thousand, since twenty twenty-three, coming out of COVID, insurance has gone up ninety-nine point four seven percent for school systems, eleven thousand three forty to twenty-two six twenty. I believe when I started in ninety-eight, the system was paying maybe three thousand dollars for my insurance as a teacher. And so you can see what it's gone to. It's cost the system twenty-two thousand six hundred and twenty dollars.
Starting July one, so part of that's going to impact this year's budget when we do payroll accruals for July and August.
Then they started hitting our non-certificated folks. So you can see that's thirty percent this year, that's going from seventeen, and they tiered it for us, they did eleven, fifteen, now seventeen, now they're going to twenty-two, just like our certificated employees. So that's three point two million dollars that they'll add to the budget just for our non-certificated employees to be offering insurance. Now again, we budget an amount, that's if every employee were to take it.
Actually, we budget estimating on what people have done in the past because if we budgeted for every employee to take the insurance next year, it would be over thirty-two million dollars.
But if they all decide to take it, guess what we got to pay?
We're going to pay the whole.
I mean, it is what it is. A budget is a budget for a reason. It's a projection based on previous experience, but what worst-case scenario? Worst-case scenario is everybody comes in and says, hey, your benefit's pretty good, we're going to take thirty-two million dollars. I mean, it is what it is, so.
And that's the whole reason in the past, you always heard of someone that retired and came back point four nine, you're probably familiar with that. Well, now you keep hearing this point four three five. Well, it's because state health came back and said, well, you know, if you're a certificated person and you're working point four nine, point four eight, you're eligible for insurance still. And so they would still be retired, but their insurance would not come out of their TRS check, it would come out of their actual employment check and then we would have to pay that employee, excuse me, employer portion, hence point four three five for certificated people. You're not going to hear point four nine anymore in that respect.
So those are just, I mean, those are costs that are going up that have nothing to do with us, has nothing to do with military rate, has nothing to do, those are just costs that are being passed down. And if you think about it, all of Georgia's understate health benefits, and so there's a level of a monopoly there and they, they control how much they charge us. And so it's kind of like TRS. Remember they stuck at twenty for years and years? When I started TRS, they were paying in less than, it was, it was less than double digits, but the system was making, we were paying six, the system was paying about nine. So you know, I mean, we're going to see that in just a second, it's gone up again as well. Now again, that has to do with the number of people that are retired, that are on retirement and the number of people that are coming in that used to contribute and they're, they're not coming into the profession now, so there's fewer people contributing. So that means you can still put in six percent, but the districts are making up the difference for these retirees. I mean, it's, so benefits are definitely going up and Rachel gave you kind of an idea of what that's looked like over the past few years, where our expenditures are, where state health benefits are in our budget.
And, and basically that graph and this right here, which I noticed, I just noticed I had FY twenty-five in the graph behind it, but anyway, this right, this right here is our expenditures that we paid out in health insurance until FY twenty-five, and that's basically what our budget is this year. And then FY twenty-six estimated there, but on the column on the right, that, the state gives us funding for health insurance for certificated. It was part of that QBE slide back in the beginning that we've lost two and a half million dollars in, but that's the amount of the QBE payment that is for teachers' health insurance that they give to us.
So you can see there's a ten million dollar difference in this year's budget. That's, that's all local fund, okay? So everything we've talked about so far has been all coming on the back of our local funds and what that revenue is, so. But you're limited in where those funds can come from. Teacher retirement, there you can see twenty point seven eight percent this year, it's going to twenty-one point nine one next year. So that's, and that's not, that's like the teacher experience for those that have experience, that one point one million dollars, that's a, that's a, you don't have a choice in that, you have to pay that. Same with this, that's seven hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars that the local system pays into TRS based on that percentage. And we thought it would come down, it came down to twenty and it stayed there for maybe two years, then it went up just a nudge over twenty and then it started again. So I, you know, it's one of those pieces that are in there for us regardless. So this is just an estimate. Now this is not, again, going back to our original conversation with, when we got into PSU, about experience versus local supplement. This is just on the increase of five hundred dollars to the two tiers, adding the third tier, the certificated steps, that's the increase in their experience that they're still eligible. Non-certificated at a dollar an hour and their steps if you add that, the health insurance increase and the TRS. So you can see, right now, we're, with just those in there, we're at seven point seven million dollars that we're adding to the budget. Plus, we're starting off at two point five million dollar loss. So you're, you're looking at somewhere around ten million dollars that this is going to enable the, in order to balance, that's where your reserve balance comes in and you offset those, those costs to balance your budget. Now, you did this little speech and I did this speech, this is my two thousand thirteen, fourteen FTE budget. When we were laying off, my first year we laid off fifty-two employees. My first day on the job, we laid off fifty-two people. I was the most popular superintendent in the South. Fifty-two people I laid off, okay? We had eight further days that were, those were work days that you didn't come to work and you didn't get paid for it, just to make our budget work. Okay, that's what we had to do. And we had to do that, it was silent, it worked, right? But I kept saying, concentrate on your FTE, really look at what you're doing and we'll, we'll grow out of this. And we did, we got out of that. This was before increases in benefits just exponentially took place, right? But this is what we've done for the last four years with COVID money, knowing this was coming. So you've got to build that fund balance to get yourself to a place where you, you're going to be okay. That's where we are, we're in good shape. The other thing is keep in mind, when we project out expenditures every year and we project out budget, revenue every year, we under-project revenue every year. It always comes in more than we thought, okay? We do that purposely. We over-project expenditures and every year that I've been here, it's been somewhere between four and seven percent that we fall under in expenditures every year. Those are millions of dollars, right? Now, well, Mr. Range, you're, you're inflating your budget, not at all. I have to put in there positions because during the course of the year, five hundred kids show up at the door, I got to have teachers for them, right? Okay, so you've got to have some people built in. But over the past four or five years, we've done that and we can't hire them, we can't find them, right? So it's, that expenditure, that percentage that we're saving, it's gotten more and more. So I say all that to say this, we go into these budgets every year where we're under- projecting here, over- projecting here, and at the end of the year, we always balance and we save our fund balance.
Or in some years, we've actually gotten more revenue than we had expended.
And if you think about thirty million dollars influx into our, our budget with COVID money and we spent wisely, that's why we're sitting in a place where we are now. So I say all that to say, there's shock value associated when I say ten million dollars, I get it, right? But I want you to know, we always over-project and under-project the revenue because we typically end up in a balanced state. And if we have to use some money out of our fund balance, guess what? By the time you get to an approved tentative budget, we're probably going to be sitting somewhere around forty-four million dollars in our fund. Now, a lot of people are going to go, holy smoke, that's a lot of money. That's probably less than eight months of operating capital.
Oh, it's.
I mean, but my point is, if you're running a business, you're going to have a lot more money in reserve hopefully to keep your business running. We've got enough in there to where we can make our payroll payments all through the year even when we're not getting taxes, tax collections.
That's really only about four and a half months because right now, we're running about nine and a half million a month in expenditures.
So the point being, the point being, you've got to have a healthy fund balance. If you don't, you're not doing what's wise with your dollar, okay? So just giving you a lot of information. The other thing I'll just throw out there is, you guys have to make the decision at some point when the tax digest comes in, what are we going to do about the military, okay? So currently, you're sitting at a great spot. We don't think the assessed values this year after three straight years of them going like this, we don't think, we think it's going to cap out this year. But you've got House Bill five eighty-one at play, you've got some other exemptions at play, we don't know what it's going to look like at this point. So that rollback amount may come in less. Last year, we kept saying, can't go below fourteen because we'd lose equalization. Now you've got a new bill that says, hey, you can go to ten and not lose equalization. You're going to lose it incrementally, just like we talked about, but you're not going to lose it totally. So your tax base is going to start pushing to say, well, hey, you've got forty-four million dollars in the bank, you need to take the rollback. That's coming. I'm telling you, when you can sit here and tell them that state health benefits has gone up ninety-four percent and it continues to go up, you've got to have money somewhere to make sure that you're doing business and. you're doing business and doing it the right way. And I'm preaching to the choir, you guys know all this, I meant that. But I try to provide you with at least the talking point, so when people are asking those questions, you can, you can answer them with a legitimate answer, and I hope that helps. If, if, I'm making sense at all, okay, okay. So, I just need you to be thinking before now and Tuesday night, what are the things that we want to move forward with? Great idea about waiting on the actuary study, and if it's 25, then doing maybe a couple of steps, and then 25 plus, that helps on what Phyllis was thinking, where the, the number they come back getting in retirement would be at a, maybe a little lower rate, but it's still beneficial for them, and it benefits us. You say the 22.6, and you pull the six percent out of their, their salary for TRS, doesn't cost us a whole lot of money at all for that employee to gain on its exponential credit. Local, that's something we need to think about. Bus drivers, if you separate that out, try to get that in a more marketable position. And we've done step increases in hourly rates for several years, and we've got our folks closer to a place, we're still, you know, under the mark, if you look at school systems around us, you'll see in the personnel list tonight, we still have folks that are leaving us and going to other counties. Some of that can't be helped, some of it's moved, some of it's family-related, some of it's generational, whatever, but it, it can't, we can't let it continue to be about, hey, if it is, we're never going to catch up, we're always going to get what's left. And that's not a good way to, to address our kids, and it's not a good way to keep our graduation rate high and keep our readiness scores going up. It's not a good place to keep culture and climate away, so. I'm going to pause and just let y'all, I know you, I'm giving you time. Can you think of anything that we've missed that we've talked about before? Is there something that still is like, I just don't understand what he just said, can I, you know, say it again in a different way, or is there anything else that you're thinking right this second that I might be able to address? I've got a couple of things, I know we've got a personnel list, and we've got a potential litigation I need to talk to you guys about, but there's a couple of things that are very specific about positions that I do want to talk to you about that might help with some of this when we get into executive session, that I didn't feel comfortable, and it's, I don't need to share it in, in public, so I wanted to make sure that that was covered. So, you know, if there are questions related to personnel when we get back there, then definitely we can talk about that, but a lot of this is wide open right now, so I'll give you that opportunity.
So do you want recommendations from us right now of what to look for, or what to work on specifically before?
So here, here's the, here's the biggest thing for us. If, if we decide to go with increases to salary schedule, then the process is to roll all those employees up to that new level in our system, right? Once you do that to print those things, then if you don't choose that, you've got to roll them all back down, and it's, it's, it's a lot of work. And so that, that's, that's the main thing, Kevin, is to say, you guys feel comfortable saying, yeah, let's push this out there? Now, keep in mind, even if we did all that, and we get to that tentative budget moment, and you go, ah, I just, I don't think we can do that, we can pull it out. I mean, it's a lot of work, but we can do that, because you've got to be able to, you've got to be able to pass a budget that you can go out and explain and justify, okay? And so, and then you got to go into potential mileage discussions. So I try to give you all that before you go into those conversations, but, but you're 100% right, it's a lot of work to get it there, but again, that, that's what we do, so we, we're happy to do that. I just need to know, yeah, that sounds good, I think this will work, eh, maybe we wait a year on that, or we cut it in half, and we do half this year, half next year. Those are the kind of things that you guys need to really be having conversations together about, and make some decisions, so it gives us kind of our margin order.
And all of these are, all of these are rough projections. Once I get in there, and, you know, a different number of teachers may be moving on experience, once I get in budget prep and do all the detail level work, these numbers may come out a little bit different, just depending, you know?
I, I would like to see an estimate of that extra step. So 21, 22, 23, 24, and then 25 plus. As far as a local supplement addition, not, you know.
And are you talking about the local supplement that we had on our proposed local supplement, or, okay?
The, the 500 dollar increase or whatever, what that would look like with an extra step involved in that.
To keep in step, I don't, I don't see where government's choice, really.
Well, and I, Dr. Rosen, I, I think you're, you're hearing right where I am. You got a choice, but it's, it's either the experience side, or it's the supplement side. Either way, you're adding to the employee, so they're gaining from this. One, they're gaining, in the long run, it's $4,000 more than it is on the supplement side, but it does make us competitive either way. The experience makes people perk up and go, ooh, Walker's paying more experience. That does add a level that we've never had before. But the local supplement, we've been, it's been a complaint for years, that our local supplement is lower than everybody around us, and so that's why we started addressing that, because you've got a lot of folks that, that's important too. So, it, it, to your point though, you've got to do something to attract every time, that's exactly right. Now you've got two choices, but both of them are, there's an addition to the budget for both of them.
It sounds like two choices, but.
Maybe they're not. You're, you're right, you're, you're right on, so I, I appreciate that. So, but, you know, what, I'm always trying to think of, you know, it's kind of happy wife, happy life, it's happy teachers, better students, better service to students. And, and our teachers are, are looking around now and finding that they can do that same thing somewhere else and get more pay.
But you're also looking at, if you go experience, you're talking about roughly, what, eight times the cost? I mean, if you're talking about 4,000, you know, 500, 500 dollars for each, at a minimum.
So, so, by, by, to your point, Kevin, you're right. So by formula, we took where they went from, you know, the, the, the end of the scale, and took that percentage, and then did it over the next three, so for a T4, it was 14, 15, 15, 60. Those were the differences. So right now, you're adding a new scale, which if they stay right now where they are, it's going to be 500 more. If we move and add a new scale, it's a thousand dollars, that one, you can see, is 4,500. Yeah, so, it is, it's three times, basically, yes, sir.
But anything that we add to the scale needs to be sustainable with, you know, because the state's not going to add levels to the scale to my knowledge, they haven't.
And that doesn't include if a new governor comes in and does like Governor Kemp's done, and give them some raises along the way. They all get that, that affects their, everybody's scale. But if you're doing the experience, you've added a, you've added a component that not a lot of people have done. Now, the reason they've not done that is because it did cost, yeah.
And four out of five years, they'd have increased the state scale for teachers, and that year that they didn't is when we bumped our local up 500.
And conversely, they all sold out districts to go in the hole and do furlough days for teachers, too. So, I mean, they've gone from one end of the spectrum to the other on this. I just, I, I, to me, if I'm a politician right now in Georgia, I have a really hard time talking about not funding education when you look at what's in the bank down there. I mean, it is what it is. When you've got billions of dollars sitting on it, and you're not using that to help, that's a problem, right? And, but they'll tell you they fully funded us, so, and we all know that that's just not true, so. So, direction would be good, I think that would be good conversation between the five of you to, to kind of see where everybody's sitting. You know, our goal Tuesday night would be that we have a level of direction so we can start bringing you concrete numbers instead of these rough projections, and that way, when we get to next month, and we may have to have another work session, I hate that, I do, but just to solidify a tentative budget going into, because when we put it on the agenda, you've got to be in agreement on it, and we've got to present it to stakeholders as, as, as part of the law.
It needs to be on the website and all that before we have the public hearings.
So that, those are, those are all coming. We're a month ahead, so we're good, but this was a lot. Typically, I'm not starting off with, we're losing 2.5 million dollars, remember last year, we got an additional three. So we went into that budget thinking, oh, this is fantastic, we're getting three million, three million dollars more than we have ever gotten, this is great. This year was a little different, and we're starting off with that big hit, so. Other questions or comments, or, um, don't want to throw something at me, or, I just like giving you as much information as I can so that there's no surprises, and it gives you a chance to kind of remediate a little bit, and think about it, and then write questions down as well. Mr. Chairman, other than that, that's all I have on the budget. We do have need for executive session for personnel and for potential litigation.
We do have need for executive session, do we have a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Second.
All presentable. Do we need executive stand?
I don't know.
And now I'll give it to the. Okay, we are back in session. We have a recommendation of personnel for certificated, um, non-certificated, uh, nutrition workers, custodians, and paraprofessionals. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. One in favor.
I, I need to abstain from one of the, uh, certificated recommendations. Uh, Davis Richardson, I cannot vote him.
Okay. You're good with everybody else?
I'm good with everybody else.
All right. All those in favor? We need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?